For August 16th, the order at 6:00 PM. All alderpersons are present in the chambers. Our next item is Pledge Allegiance and Silent Prayer in lieu of invocation.
The Pledge Allegiance is a pledge by the United States of America to the Republic, for its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, and for the people of it.
Okay, item number four is reading of the minutes of the... Ready? Oh. All right. Item number four is reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on July 19th. What are your wishes?
Move to approve. Oh, yeah, I forgot.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero nays. Now we're on to item five, consider for confirmation Mayor Blazer's appointment to various commissions, committees, various commissions and boards. So we have a motion by Bemke, second by Evanson. I almost said it wrong. Any discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero nays. On to item six, consider for adoption the action of the Plan Commission, Planning Commission at its meeting held August 1st. Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor. The Plan Commission met at 4:00 PM on August 1st, 2022, in the City of Wisconsin Rapids Council Chambers and via audio conferencing. Members present are on file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 4:01 PM. Item one was the approval of the report from July 7th. There was a motion by Gudrow to approve the report from July 7th, including the attendee correction, seconded by Austin. That motion carried five zero. Item number two was an update on the recovery and redevelopment plan by Director Kearns, who noted that the Forest Industries Symposium occurred on July 21st, and the webinar was recorded and is available on the community development website. Item, there was no action on that item. Item three is the request from Wisconsin Rapids Public School District for site plan review to perform site improvements at 1801 16th Street South, which is the high school. Director Kearns reviewed the project, which included the renovation of the existing parking lot, and summarized the request. Conversation ensued between the commission and staff regarding additional frontage. That'll be a correction in the minutes. The distance of the road to the back of the lot, ingress egress and traffic flow at the northern entrance. Craig Boran added his comments and answered Mr. Dobbins' questions about the drop-off area. There was a motion by Blazer to approve the request for site plan review to perform site improvements at 1801 16th Street South. Subject to the conditions listed, there were nine conditions. That motion carried five zero. Item number four was a request by Deborah Pritchett in a public hearing and action for a conditional use permit to operate a tourist rooming house at 541 Baker Street. Associate Planner Edmondson provided a synopsis of the request. A public hearing was opened at 4:16 PM. No one spoke in favor of the request or against the request. That public hearing closed at 4:17. There was a motion by Austin to approve the request, subject to nine conditions. There was a second by Gudrow. Some conversation ensued thereafter regarding the conditions and the council action that occurred last month. That motion carried five zero. Item five was a request from Kim Kingsey for a conditional use permit to operate a tourist rooming house at 1651 Riverwood Lane. Associate Planner Edmondson provided a synopsis and summary of the request. The public hearing was opened at 4:23 PM. No one spoke in favor or against. That public hearing closed at 4:24 PM. There was a motion by Gudrow to approve the request, subject to nine conditions, and a second by Austin. That motion carried five zero. Item six was adjournment, motion by Gudrow to adjourn, seconded by Blazer. Motion carried five zero. Meeting adjourned at 4:25. Thank you very much.
Mr. Delaney?
I'd just like to hold out four and five when there's a motion.
Thank you. Any other items? Seeing none, what are your wishes on the balance of the report? A motion by Austin, seconded by Veneman. Any further discussion on the balance? That motion carried eight A's, zero nays. Mr. Delaney?
I'd just like to bring up the fact that these are redundant rules, having to do and for us to keep consistency in dealing with business and keep congruency in our decision-making, that we should approve these with no condition, such as we did last one. I'll make a motion to approve them with no condition.
Want to hit your button? Oh, we have a motion by Delaney to approve both with all conditions. And we have seconded by Veneman. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. I guess, as Patrick pointed out, inconsistency, I'll be voting A. Okay, we're on to item seven, consider for committees. Item A is Finance and Property Committee meeting held on August 2nd. Matt?
Finance and Property Committee met at, on Tuesday, August 2nd, at 2022 Council Chambers at City Hall. All members of the Finance and Property Committee were present, except for Chairperson Zachar, who was excused. Alderperson Reom attended in place of Zachar. Secretary Veneman chaired the meeting. Also in attendance were Alderperson Pollock, Mayor Blazer, Fire Chief Ekis, Justin Plous, and the list of everybody else is included. Item number one, call the order. Chairperson Veneman called the meeting to order at 5:00 PM. Item two, consider for approval the appointment of Elizabeth Meda, Assistant Agent for the Retail Class B Fermented Malted Beverages and Retail Class B Intoxicating Liquor License for Drop-In Again LLC for the premises located at 2963 State Highway 73 South to begin October 20th, 2022. It was moved by Bemke and seconded by Reom to approve the motion, and motion carried three to zero. Item three, consider for approval a temporary Retail Class B Fermented Malted Beverage License and Temporary Retail Class B Wine License for Assumption Catholic Schools Inc. for the premises located at 445 Chestnut Street for a Feast of Assumption event on Sunday, August 14th, from 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and for a royal event to be held on Sunday, October 9th, 2022, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Bemke to approve the motion. Motion carried three to zero. Item four, consider for approval a Temporary Retail Class B Fermented Malted Beverages License and a Temporary Retail Class B Wine License for Friends of Rapids Music at 441 Second Street South for the premises, as outlined on the map, provided within Robinson Park for Friends of Rapids Music Annual Music Festival to be held on Saturday, September 10th, 2022, from 1:00 PM to 9:00 PM. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Veneman to approve this motion. Motion carried three to zero. Item five, consider a request from the Fire Department to apply for a SAFER Grant. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Reom to approve the application for a SAFER Grant. Motion carried three to zero. Item six, Fire Department presentation called Reducing Liability. A presentation called Reducing Liability was given by the Fire Department. No action was taken on this item. Audit of the bills. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Bemke to approve checks, 13491 to 13880. Motion carried three to zero. Set next meeting date. Item eight, the next regular committee meeting is tentatively set for Tuesday, September 6th, 2022, at 5:00 PM, pending approval of Chairperson Zachar. Do you need us to talk about that right now? Just finish the minutes?
Yeah.
And item number nine, adjournment. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Bemke to adjourn. Motion carried three to zero, and the meeting adjourned at 6:07 PM. I respectfully submit these minutes for approval.
Thank you. Any item need to be held out? Oh, Patrick?
Can we hold out six?
Item six. Any other items? So we have a motion, is there a second? Oh, I'm sorry. No, nobody. I think if Patrick had it. No, Patrick. Okay. We have a motion by Delaney, seconded by Veneman. And when we get through at the final here, if you want to make, talk about the next meeting, when we get through the votes?
Okay.
If that works. Any further discussion on the balance of the report? Number six. There was no action, but that's a non-action item. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one quick, and we can't talk about it, but I was just wondering, I don't know if this is the time to talk about it, but I was surprised that I didn't see any budget information. According to our timeline, I saw that August 16th, we were going to be updated on the 2023 budget. I just, I was surprised I didn't see it in there. I don't know if you could comment on that.
So in, in the meeting, I did comment that budget, department head budgets are due this Friday, the final budgets. And then there'll be work to put together that budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero nays. Mr. Delaney, item six?
Okay, I do realize this was a non-action item. The chief gave a great presentation. During his presentation, he was very adamant that we get moving on hiring three new people immediately with the three other that was in number five that you guys had approved. And I'm just wondering why no action was ever taken if it's such an immediate need. I do realize that we were talking about putting it in the budget and getting it budgeted. I understand that. Last month during Common Council, we spent, I think about double what these three people would cost on an item that was not going to be, any action put on it. And I'm speaking of the Lowell Center for Equipment Replacement that we had there. And in my view, I think that we should approve these three that he's looking for as well. He says it's an immediate need. I don't think we should wait until the end of the year. If we're gonna wait anymore, any longer, I think we should turn that three into six for the grant. But I really think he demonstrated that the three have already been paid for, and with the cost of their billing for Medicaid has gone up 40%, so they will be paid for in that way as well. So in my mind, I would say, I think we should move ahead and approve it to be budgeted for next year.
And I think that's the plan, is to present it in the budget through that budget process. So it's gone to both, oh, well, the presentation. Yeah, and then the funding will have to be allocated.
What I'm saying is, you guys last month spent way more than this without even having an engineer, somebody look at the space and figure out if there was anything better than we could do than just to replace the equipment that's already there, that's already 20 years old, that maybe there might be something better. But yet, in terms of saving people's lives and helping the Fire Department out, I would say that something like this should be, it shouldn't be put off another month.
Yeah, and just to let you know, any other item that you're talking about, it's gonna go to a public bidding process, so you will see bids, and then I'll come back again. The senior center. It was held out, yeah.
No, because it's not on the agenda.
As an actionable.
To request a certain number of people. There's a requisition process that goes through. You can't create positions through the budget. Goes to HR, has to be done, well, it's supposed to be done before August 1st, and made, and then go to HR and Finance, and then be placed in the budget. So there's no, there was no, the agenda item just says presentation, I think, right? So it'll have to go, oppositions have to go through that same process.
Are you saying that he's too late because he didn't get it done by August 1st?
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying what the policy is. I varied from the policy in the past, so it's probably not going to be a big deal. If you want to approve the people, you probably will. I mean, but it should be, the policy is pretty clear in terms of, that we're not, we're not creating positions in the budget. It should be part of HR, you know, go to HR and Finance, and then, you know, obviously can be budgeted if it's approved. And maybe the, you know, I don't know when the requisition was made.
It's, it was timely. So the whole point is for it to, was for it to go through the budget process. Chief Ekis, you know, gave that presentation to basically explain his argument why it should be in the budget, and so then, yeah, then the budget process will start here pretty quick. Yeah, go ahead.
So we weren't too late to get it in for the budget process. Their requisition was in, you know, before August 1st. I think the point is, is that it was not an actionable item at the, or at the Finance and Property meeting, and that's why it couldn't be acted on. But as far as it being acted on, the requisition has been in for a month, asking for it because it needs to be part of the budget process. And that's, that was why we went to Finance and Property a month ago in HR, so that all members could see the information and the research that was done, so that it can be part of the budget process. And I can tell you that, I know Tim is looking at the money right now. He's looking at the money that's been brought in so far, and there, that's all got to be part of it, I guess, the way it looks to me. I sure appreciate your, your input to it, because they are very much needed.
Go ahead, Tim.
Yes, you know, I've been working with Chief Ekis, and we're putting together various budget scenarios that we'll include in the budget process for the addition of those three firefighters as of, as of the January 1 of this year. And then, obviously, they'll be applying for the other three through the SAFER Grant, and we'll, obviously, depending on what the outcome of that is, we'll deal with that from a budget standpoint at that point. But right now, we're looking at two budget scenarios that will be part of the, this process going forward for our 2023 budget, one with the status quo, and obviously, and the other with the additional three firefighters as of 1-1 of '23.
Thank you, Tim. Any further discussion? Do we need to dispose of it anyway? No, please.
I thought it was being discussed as part of the motion, just like other. It was held out. Okay. All right.
Okay. Okay, moving on to item B, Public Works Committee held August 4th. Mr. Austin. Yep.
The Public Works Committee met on Thursday, August 4th, 2022, in the Council Chambers at City Hall and via remote video conference. Ryan Austin, Dennis Pollock, and Tom Reom were in attendance. Sherri Evanson was excused. Others attending are listed below. Item one, call the meeting to order. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Item two, review Engineering and Street Department Monthly Activity Reports. The reports were reviewed. Item three, review proposals for a feasibility study, alternatives addressing vehicle delays and rail usage. Motion by Austin, seconded by Pollock, to approve the combined proposals from Patrick Engineering and Link Things for a free fee of $32,000. Motion carried. Item four, review a change order request to the 2021 Sewer Lining Contract to include lining for a 15-inch sanitary sewer pipe along Chestnut Street between Lincoln Street and Cliff Street. Motion by Austin, seconded by Pollock, to approve the change order at a rate of $95 a lineal foot for a distance of 270 lineal feet. Motion carried. Item five, review the referral list. The referral list was reviewed. Item six, set the next meeting date. Next meeting date was set. And item seven was adjournment, motion by Austin, seconded by Pollock, to adjourn at 5:31 PM. And with that, I submit the Public Works Report to Council for approval.
We have a motion by Evanson, and a second by Veneman. Any for, Mr. Delaney?
Can I hold out three?
Everybody good with that? All right. Any further discussion, comments? That motion carried eight A's, zero nays. Mr. Delaney?
I'm just wondering if this is the same feasibility study that we had initially approved $20,000 for, and now we are looking to approve $32,000 for, and nothing's really been done on it yet, that I know of, except we've just got some people look at it. Just kind of wondering how we got from a $20,000 approval up to $32,000.
So Mr. Ekis is online, he can explain it, but what happened, it was sent back, and then they took two proposals, and they figured, got a price to merge the two together? And Joe, if you could explain, maybe? Or maybe not? Do you remember, Mr. Austin, how that worked?
Yeah, so the scope for the Link and Things and Patrick Cole, what those particular companies look for are kind of two different, separate items, and the MSA kind of encompasses everything the two combined would be looking at. So MSA's quote was like $80,000, and combining the two links, and then Patrick Cole would get us the information that we were looking for out of this, out of this feasibility study at half the cost of MSA. So that's why we decided to combine the two.
You guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now, Joe.
Okay, great. My microphone was, my apologies, there wasn't, had to unplug it and plug it back in. But yeah, so we originally brought the, the request for proposals, the draft document before the Public Works Committee. That was reviewed, along with funding at the $20,000 level. And then we got the proposals back. We got three of them back. They ranged from $19,000, $20,000, and $86,000, and considering pros and cons to each of those, there was benefits from two of the proposals that the committee reviewed, and we went back to each of those two companies to say, could we combine both of, both of the benefits that you guys have? One firm provided a lot of upfront problem definition, able to put a cost to the impacts that we're seeing today and what the impact actually are. On one hand, we have the train noise issue, and on the other hand, we've got the, the vehicle inconvenience and access issues. And then combining that with the, the engineering benefits of looking at all the alternatives, and so the combined proposal, both of the firms were willing to work together, proposed a new fee of $32,000 combined. And so that's, that's kind of how we arrived at the $32,000 mark.
Thank you. Patrick?
And this, what they're gonna do is gonna be able to complete the feasibility study that we were first seeking for $20,000?
Yes. I mean, $20,000 was a number, I think it was kind of thrown on this feasibility study back in 2018. That was our starting point. Obviously, we didn't know what it was going to cost until we received quotes from qualified, you know, engineering firms, so the price went up to get the information that we want out of this feasibility study. We thought it was best to combine the two. You know, obviously, one is taking on maybe a little bit more. You know, obviously, one is taking on maybe a little bit more scope than the other, but we're getting the well-rounded information that we're looking for.
Bemki.
Thank you. Thank you. So I understand that Alderman Reom has got a referral in for another quiet zone study on the east side of the river. Is there, is any of this going to, any benefit to this study? Anything that we can use on the east side? Or is this going to be just for the west side?
So we discussed that.
Primarily it'd be.
Go ahead, Joe. Go ahead.
Primarily it'd be targeted for the, for the west side. Certainly, there might be some information that we could utilize for the east side, on the proposed recommendation. But largely, the focus is directly related to the west side rail.
Would, would there be a benefit going back and doing the whole thing? I mean, looking at the whole city right now, instead of just, just the west side? Would there be a savings there? Is it an unknown?
It's a good question. I think that, you know, there, in some ways, they overlap, but in other ways, there are issues. I don't, don't know that, you know, so Reom's request is largely just for the quiet zone. So in some ways, you know, the quiet zone overlaps, but the, the other issues do differ. So I don't know that there'd be significant cost savings there. Certainly, we're going to revisit the information that we put together previously regarding quiet zones, specific to the east side, and bring them back to the committee for review, potentially in September. I think one of the largest hurdles with quiet zone implementation is, is the cost. It gets very expensive.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear what you said, the cost. I didn't, I, what was the biggest?
For the cost, it, it's just, one of the biggest hurdles with the quiet zone is the cost. The inconvenience, and the, I guess, the annoyance factor of the, of the horns, with a price tag of three quarters of a million dollars, or whatever that value is. I can't, can't recall exactly, but we're going to revisit that in September, what we had looked at previously, in order to get the safety of each of the intersections in the quiet zone to compensate for the loss of the train horn. It was a significant cost to do that.
Thank you.
Any other discussions? Oh, go ahead.
Have these companies worked with the railroads?
Engineering, they have, yes. They have, they do a significant amount of rail design work and working with CN.
Any other discussion? What are your wishes? So a motion by Bemki, seconded by Austin. I take it to approve the item as presented? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero Nays. On to item C, Human Resource Committee meeting held August 9th. Mr. Bemki.
Thank you. Human Resource Meeting was held Tuesday, August 9th, at 1:30 PM. Mayor Blazer, Attorney Schill, Alderperson Pollak, Fire Chief Echus, Coordinator Jill Kremer, HR Manager Ryan Hartman, and all committee members were present. Meeting was called to order at 1:33 PM. Item number two, HR updates. A, current recruiting. One, HR. Two, police chief. Three, crossing guards. And four, engineering technician. Updates were provided, no action was taken. Item number three was the wage study. Brief discussion and an update on the wage study. Item four, discuss and consider for approval revisions to the remote work policy. There was a motion by Bemki, seconded by Delaney, to approve the revisions to the remote work policy as presented. Motion carried three zero. Item five was adjourned. Motion by Bemki, seconded by Delaney, to adjourn. Motion carried three zero. Meeting adjourned at 2:10. Thank you.
Anyone need any items held out? Okay, seeing none, what are your wishes? So a motion by Veneman, seconded by Zachar. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero Nays. And before that, we get to the end of the meeting, Mr. Zachar, we got to remember to talk about your finance date. Forgot about that. On to item D, Legislative Committee meeting held August 11th. Mr. Bemki.
Thanks again. Legislative Committee met at 4:00 PM on Thursday, August 11th, in the council chambers. All members of the committee were present, also in attendance, Alderman Pollak, Reom, and Veneman, Mayor Blazer, Sue Schill, Tyler Mickelson, and Jennifer Gosick. Item number one, call the meeting. Meeting was called to order at 4:02 PM. Item two, consider for adoption and ordinance revising the role and responsibilities of the Park and Recreation Commission as recommended by the Park and Recreation Ad-Hoc Committee and the Park and Recreation Commission. Motion by Austin, seconded by Zachar, to adopt the ordinance revising the role and responsibilities of the Park and Rec Commission. Motion carried three zero. Item three, consider for adoption and ordinance, which would change the standing committee secretary positions to vice chair positions. Motion by Zachar, seconded by Bemki, to adopt an ordinance changing standing committee secretary positions to vice chair positions. Motion carried two to one, with Austin voting in the negative. Item number four, consider for adoption and ordinance, which provides for revocation of a retail alcohol license if the license is not used for a period of four months. There was a motion by Austin, seconded by Zachar, to adopt an ordinance which provides for a revocation of a retail alcohol license if the license is not used for a period of four months. Motion carried three zero. Item five, discuss the rules of the common council specifically relating to the video conferencing for standing committee, common council, and other committee meetings. No action was taken. Item six, discuss temporary alcohol licenses and their requirements under state laws that relates to recent requests for temporary alcohol licenses. No action was taken. Item seven, discuss a referral from Alderperson Evanson regarding department heads providing reports to the common council and department head reporting to a committee. Again, no action was taken. Item eight, discuss referral from Alderperson Evanson to recreate an ad hoc committee, aquatics ad hoc committee, to focus on all aspects relating to the Aquatic Center. No action was taken. Motion by Austin, seconded by Zachar, to adjourn. Motion carried three zero, and the meeting adjourned at 5:31. Thank you.
What are your wishes? Good.
I just have one question. So the ordinances that the Legislative Committee approved, are we approving those ordinances as is right now?
They're on, yeah, they're for your consideration to, today, tonight. Right, it's a referral from the standing committee to adopt these ordinances.
We have a motion by Austin, seconded by Zachar. Any further discussions? Go ahead.
I just wanted to note, for number two, I'm sorry, hang on. The ordinance amending the duties of the Park and Rec Commission. I know I've spoke on this before, but not that I feel micromanaging is appropriate at all in this. I just have a problem with $15 million facility that a commission is regulating. I understand we can change the budget or their budget amount during budget process. But like I had said in the past, if I go in and say I want to eliminate the budget $20,000 because of this. I was able to get a report from Jake in the Parks Department, because they talked about the different amounts and the resident, non-resident fee. But there was no packet for it, so it was hard to review ahead of time. But I did get that. But I just feel that every year, we're going farther and farther in debt with the Aquatic Center. In no way, shape, or form does the commission, the council has a say of what the amount should be, or how much we could charge more to make up some revenue for that. But I do believe it's in the, the budget process. But like I said, that, it's not a fine line, so I'm not going to be voting for that. Thank you.
Whoops. Mr. Delaney?
I didn't attend this meeting, but I watched it online. And during it, Attorney Schill had said that, like, items five and six, that we would be discussing at more at common council. And there's no action that was taken. I just want to know if that is something that we're going to discuss, or if it's going to be on the next Legislative Committee meeting next year in the fall sometime, or?
It is, I guess.
Well, right, it's on your agenda. It can be discussed now, if you want to hold out an item to talk about it. But there's no, there was no action taken, and you, and you can't propose an ordinance or a rule tonight to vote on, because there's nothing been noticed for that. But it's my understanding that it was going to be placed on the next legislative meeting, which I think is set for October 13th. And I don't know, the chair might have some thoughts on that.
Would you like to discuss it, to get the other Aldermans? Would you like to discuss it, or just move on? I'm fine either way.
We can hold it out, and.
Well, I guess the way.
Right, well, that's true.
I, I think, or Matt or Ryan, correct me, but the way I understood this, especially with number, item number five, I believe, Sue, you were going to kind of gather some information, get the thoughts of the council, and bring something back. Is that correct?
Well, I was looking for direction from.
Direction, okay.
Right?
Yep.
And you talked about a number of different things. So, right, if the council right now wants to give, talk about it, or at the next meeting, talk about it. But ideally, we, at least in terms of the governing body members and their participation, you know, other than in person, I think that needs to be firmed up in a policy or a rule of the council or an ordinance. So, right, I, I don't, I, I think the other, I thought maybe the, the members at the meeting wanted to hear from other council members, whether that be by attending the next legislative meeting or talking about it tonight. But, you know, we can do it at the next legislative meeting if, if council members want to.
Well, I think there were, there were a handful of us there, and we got pretty good input from those that were there. So I guess we're, we were just missing a couple. If, I would certainly be open to hearing what they've got to say tonight. And I guess that'll give us and you a little clearer direction, then.
Yeah, I was not at the meeting, but I did watch it. I believe this is referring to Zoom. Was that correct? And I have to agree with Mr. Austin that I think it's a good feature if, if, if someone's not able to attend. So I would like to keep it as a policy. Whether it be, and I mean, I'm negotiable, that if it's, you know, just all the time, you know, always having the Zoom link, or if it's, you know, I'm not feeling well, or I'm out of town, you know, I'm going to need a link. I mean, I'm open to, to either, I guess. But I, I would like to keep it as an option, like Mr. Austin said at the meeting. I mean, it, it is a good tool to have. And in the same breath, when we were talking about, going back to the HR, about work from home, and how we're talking about, you know, keeping up with the, with the times, and this and that. And then, at this time, to get rid of Zoom altogether, I, I was, I was really shocked when I heard that. So, thank you.
Patrick?
So when I listened to it, it seemed like Ryan and everybody else was actually saying the same thing, that you do still want to have it available for older persons. It should be only on an emergency-type basis. And I think that's appropriate. But the thing I didn't quite get, is Tyler had spoke. I think that he has to be here to set up the Zoom. Is that correct? Am I wrong in that? Is that where we're?
We can bring him up.
Generally speaking, yes. You know, things typically go wrong when I'm not here. So I try to attend each meeting that I can that Zoom is going on, because when I'm not here, things typically break. That's when, when they do. So, yeah, someone has to be here. You know, Joe can do it as well. It just becomes a little bit much to run the meeting, then run Zoom, and then, you know, troubleshoot. So that's why I, I show up. So, yeah, my, you know, my preference would be, you know, from, from where I sit, is, you know, by, by appointment, by request. It just makes sense.
We would still have the Facebook or the YouTube?
Facebook and YouTube go on without a hitch. Yep, that, that continues with or without Zoom, so.
Okay, would it be possible to, like, how much heads up do you need? Like, say, somebody from in the community wants to attend a meeting? If you had like 24 hours notice?
Even less, honestly, 12 hours.
Okay.
Yeah, would be great, so.
Well, could we just have that, like, as a policy or a line on the website that says, anybody can attend if, if requested? Because like Tyler had said, he's had less than 10 people attend via Zoom that's from the community.
Yeah, and, and honestly, and, and of those, probably, you know, let's say it's a dozen people. It was for two meetings as well. So the large, large majority of our meetings, no one actually attends via Zoom. They're either watching via Facebook or on, on cable, so.
Is there any additional cost to Zoom, or is it just a free app that we?
It's a minimal yearly license. I, I think it was 40 bucks for the year, or, or, don't quote me on that. It's less than $200.
So it's mostly just freeing up your time to do other things, basically?
Yeah, and that's not, you know, hey, I like coming to meetings. But, you know, it is, it is a, an element of, of also, how is the public using it, you know, for me? And I, I don't think that we're getting a lot of engagement. And then, the meetings that we did have, the engagement via Zoom, it's really hard to administer, you know, when to mute people, when to not mute people, because people tend, tend to have the, you know, phone on speakerphone, and you can hear all the background noise. And it's, it's kind of a, it's hard to administer from, from a meeting standpoint, to say, okay, when do we give the public, you know, time to respond, while also having an orderly meeting with you guys here? So, you know, it's, it's hard.
I agree.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you. And as I stated at the meeting, also, department heads will be in attendance starting in September. So we're talking about squishing back in and having, having the seats available for department heads to, to be here to participate. Go ahead, Ms. Evans.
And, thank you, Mayor. That's what I was just going to say. I, I know I heard you say that the department heads will be back. And I, I applaud you at that, because they should be. A lot of times, we have questions and usually do a good job explaining, but sometimes it's nice to have them here to explain it. But I just had one question. So what we're just talking about, where you guys were talking about the public for 12 or 24-hour notice? Or were you talking about, I mean, if I'm in my garage and my car don't start, I want to attend the meeting. Well, I can't get here, so I have 10 minutes' notice that I need to call in to Zoom in. So.
I guess.
I mean.
Tyler, you know, for me. Tyler, you know, for me, it's, I think in that scenario and I think it's important that that be an option for council people to participate that way. Or if we have a presenter that's out of the area and we can say have a trip coming here. But I think for the public side, we need to put that on the notice, so for public participation, it needs to be on the notice versus if a council person has some situation that causes them not to be able to be here, is it something you can just set up a Zoom real quick and send it out to them?
Absolutely, yeah. If there's a situation like that where, hey, you know, it's an hour to the meeting or a half hour, you know, we can spin something up and get it going quickly. And, you know, we can certainly do that, yeah. The only, and Mayor Blazer just brought up something that I, as I was walking, thought of, you know, we've had or we have noticed these in the meeting notices for public attendance and I think that's what, forty-eight hours or twenty-four hours? I'm not sure.
Twenty-four, but preferably longer.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, it works that, but yeah, if an alderman or city staff needs something quickly or even an external vendor that, or participant needs something quickly, we can spin something up.
Thank you.
Yep.
I had just, sorry, one question. So, I know there's motions on the floor, but if I wanted to hold out two because I just don't want to vote for that, is it too late or do I have to vote no for the whole thing? I didn't know where you guys were with the motion, sorry.
You guys all good with holding out item two? Sure. It's held out. Okay. Balance of the report. Seeing no further discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Item number two, did you have anything else to add or somebody else want to make a motion?
No, thank you.
Okay. So, regarding item two, what are your wishes? We have a motion by Veneman, seconded by Zachar. Seeing no, to approve as presented. Seeing no further discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, one N. We are on to item eight, reports of other committees, commission boards, and department reports. Yep, I'm sorry. Okay, item number eight, Ms. Evenson. Sorry, motion by Delaney, seconded by Bemke, there you go.
I would just like to hold out or discuss eight J, the Park and Rec Commission, held on August eighth.
Go ahead.
Or, just discuss?
Yep.
Okay, okay. I did watch the meeting, just a little frustrated. One thing on the, not on here, Sue, yell at me, but the dog park hasn't been talked about in I don't know how long. Kind of frustrating, I know Jake had given me the capital improvement parks plan, the nice packet I was looking through and that was one of the top things that was rated on there and I'm just surprised why it's never on here. Again, relating to the aquatics, I don't mean to be disrespectful to the Park and Rec Commission at all, I know they do a great job, I just don't think sometimes they're moving fast enough. The dog park's been talking about a year. The art project, I was kind of concerned when we were talking, number three, that was on the Park and Rec Commission. I know Public Works, we talked about the safety of it and the reasons kind of why, some people were asking at the Park and Rec Commission about that. They didn't, they didn't watch the Public Works meeting, why we chose, Mr. Pollock did a good job kind of filling in, explaining kind of why we decided not to. But I was kind of concerned when some, I can't remember who, but staff was talking about, because we got this information out of the facilities development manual from the Wisconsin DOT about design roundabouts in the center island. And it, you know, it specifically states, I know I reiterated this before, but under no conditions, you know, should anything be more than four inches thick trees, fixed objects or anything like that. And it was talked that, it was mentioned that this was advisory, it was nothing that we didn't have to follow this guide and that kind of concerned me, that we're talking about not following the DOT standards. So, that kind of concerned me. I did like Mr. Tao's suggestion about moving that art display to Veterans Memorial Park. It's right off of the road between the bridge, we have lunch by the river there. I think that that would be a good spot to move this to, but it was held out again for next month and I know there was kind of an urgency for it. So, I was surprised that they couldn't make a decision with that. So, it was just kind of, just some notes from listening to that meeting, thank you.
So, I guess, and Kyle can probably speak to it, the project has been canceled and I think the process, you can tell, about creating an area where the east side pool is for art and Kyle can probably introduce it a little bit here to just give you a little information on that. And then before that happens, well, no, go ahead, I can talk a little bit about the dog park.
Yeah, so quickly, the artist that was doing that project is a student and they were headed back to school out of state and we felt as though it was more appropriate to kind of cut ties with them given the lengthy review and approval process and we also did not have funding at this point. So, that felt the most appropriate and they were very receptive and understanding of that. I do also want to mention though that part of the university year project that was done a few years back was an art inventory and there were recommendations to also do a strategic plan. So, our staff and community development is looking at the entire community and putting together a, you know, fairly vague strategic plan for art on how we can introduce art within the community. And something that might come out of that is, you know, what location the community would serve for in art park or sculpture park. And so, you know, the mayor brought up Legion, I believe, and there are others, but that's, the strategic plan will probably be done before the end of the year. And the next step for us is to have a public meeting that'll probably happen in September, which again can hopefully be a guide for us as we receive some of these art projects moving forward.
Yeah, I guess, I think it's easier to have a location kind of determined versus getting art and then now where do we put it? And Joe can maybe fill in a little bit of information with the dog park area, part of what we're waiting for is the DNR to decide, or to tell us whether or not there's wetlands there. And so, we're waiting for that and I don't know if Joe has an update on that. And then further discussion internally has been with Paul and Jake because the area is heavily wooded and that type of work is winter work and not this type of the year work. So, but the big thing is waiting for the DNR and then there'll be a budget discussion.
Great, thank you. It was just, yeah, it would be nice just to hear because it's like, some of us are like, okay, where did it go? We haven't talked about it in so long and it just seems like we, sometimes as a city, roll our feet a long time and it's just nice to keep updated that, yep, we are working on it, we are working on it, we are working on it. One thought, I know you were talking about possibly artwork down by the old east side swimming pool, but one thing I'd have a comment or caution with that is the flooding. Because I'd hate to see, you know, the artwork and I mean, I know I was following the artwork, I think it's great. I know we all think the same thing, it's great to have, but we're worried about vandalism and we still have vandalism at the water park and there's cameras there and there's lights there. So, you know, what do we do? I mean, I mean, but you can't just not have it because you're worried about that. I mean, someone could jump off the bridge or do this or do that. I mean, so, it's in the back of our mind, but I don't want it to prevent us from bringing artwork to the city. But I believe Craig on the committee had talked about, which I thought was a good idea, is, you know, okay, where's a good location? That way we don't have to go through the committee, you know, I mean, this is kind of where it goes. But as far as finding a park, I'd hate to have something wrecked and, you know, there was comments made at the meeting that, you know, like if the maintenance effort didn't work out, okay, well, three, four years, well, let's just take it out. And it's like, well, we just spent six thousand dollars on it, why would we want to just take it out? You know, so it's just, it'd be good conversations to have, so, thank you.
Yeah, and further conversation that Kyle could probably allude to is that sometimes these artists will place something in a park and maintain it for five years and then it'll be rotated out. So, there's some other ideas there that eventually hopefully will come to council here and some discussion on that location and finding that proper location.
And I think that's a great idea and one thing I hope as a team, you know, that, you know, Kyle is working with, you know, parks and streets or something like that, you know, because of the roundabout issue, you know, with putting the sixteen foot tall telephone poles in the middle, you know, if different park, things like that, that before it gets somewhere where we can vote on it, that all our checks and balances have done, so that way we don't have to drag our feet, you know, it's something that we can move ahead with. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Veneman.
Yeah, at that meeting, one of, I think, I appreciate what Kyle was saying because basically it wasn't, it was also a timeline issue, basically with the student, as he mentioned, the student was leaving. We were, we weren't really, I don't think we were really not reviewing what Public Works had suggested. It was more like, how are we going to fit this in and what were the logistics behind it? And it seemed like it was kind of a rush with the student leaving and such. And then, so I was, I think probably the most important thing was when Commissioner Breran tabled it because at that point, this didn't seem like we really had enough concrete evidence to work with anything, especially since that artist was on it such a short timeframe, so, that's kind of where I thought how that went.
Thank you. Mr. Austin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to touch on Mr. Budzberg's wastewater report, wastewater superintendent. As you all probably recall, July fifteenth, due to heavy rains, the sanitary sewer was overtaken on the west side of the river. It caused the sanitary sewer to overflow, which was reported to the DNR on most major news outlets over the weekend. Wanted to point this out and keep it fresh, we have a decision coming up with our ARPA funds. This is a very, it's a large scale project on the west side to line these sewers. And with the upcoming permit changes from the DNR over at wastewater, if we have a bunch of intrusion with this stormwater, it's going to be very hard to stay within permit regulation. So, just want to stress that this is a very important project and I think we should really consider it with our ARPA funds. Thank you.
Yeah, just a little expounding on that is that the system is designed to do exactly what it was supposed to do because if it didn't over, they have an overflow that does go to the river and if that wouldn't be in there, it would be in the basements. And they did have a few issues with some basements that they went over. The operators and the employees over at wastewater went over there and assisted those homeowners and helped clean up a little bit there. So, the system worked as it should work, but the goal is never to get it that high and the INI is that problem over there that is being addressed and worked on. All right. Seeing nothing else, we have a motion by Delaney, seconded by Bemke to approve the reports or, sorry, to place them on file. So, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Any referrals submitted? Mr. Zachar, your finance, did you want to say something about the date?
So, due to my surgery tomorrow, I guess I'm not sure if I'll be there, but we'll find out for sure, but Mr. Veneman said he would chair it again and Mr. Auma is going to check in, sitting in for me.
Sounds good.
With the date, I am fine with the date as it stands.
Okay, and then just to let you know, we have a Water and Light Commission appointment next month, so if there's anybody that's interested in that position, they can submit their resumes to the mayor's office and that will be on council agenda next month. Ms. Evenson?
Sorry, I had one question. Regarding the secretary to vice chair for the committees, Sue, did you guys, what, I know I watched the meeting, but it wasn't clear, is that going to be a policy issue? Because I know you couldn't find, you guys were looking and you didn't know what the fee, the secretary pay and all that, so.
Right, it's in the, we changed, you approved an ordinance change?
Yep.
That changed it, but as far as the pay, I wasn't, I wasn't quite sure where that is located.
Yeah.
I don't know, you weren't able to find anything or someone, yeah, it's not in the ordinance, so, yeah.
I didn't find it in there either.
Because I had emailed Mr. Austin and, or, Mr. Austin, Ryan Hartman and, you know, I'm the secretary, but, you know, we have staff, I didn't want the, you know, the ten dollars and he said, well, that's policy or whatever and then I didn't, I didn't hear any more about it, so I didn't know what the pay was or.
We can check into that for sure because I don't, it must just be, must have been a resolution of council at some point, I couldn't find it in the ordinance, so we'll clean that up and get.
I know it's been around forever, but I don't ever remember reading specifically in any ordinances. Okay, they'll look into it. All right, on to item number ten, adjournment. A motion and a second. A motion by Evenson, seconded by Zachar. Oh, yeah, sorry, too quick. I remember the old day sewer, it was just that board on the wall, it was super easy. It was super easy. Please cast your ballots.
Define right after. It's a week, dude.
Mr. Zachar, Ms. Evenson? That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.